We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting into order. We'll get started with the pledge and then invocation by the missionary. David. Oh, you know he's turning it over.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for all the many blessings you have given us. We ask, dear Lord, that during this time of struggle in our nation, that you be with our country, be with our leaders. We ask that you be with us tonight, help us make the decisions that are right for our community. Be with us, godly and direct us, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome everybody out tonight. We can get started. First item of business, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion second and further discussion. Those who favor synch path out. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
I make a motion, we pay all our bills.
Second.
We have a motion second and further discussion. Those who favor synch path out. Post same. Motion passes. Next item, under old business, second reading of the amendment of the 2021 budget.
I move to pursue the second reading of the amendment of 2021 budget.
Second.
We have a motion second and further discussion. Those who favor synch path out. Post same. Motion passes. Next item, new business. First item, structure bids. Okay. Obviously, there's a whole lot to this, so I'm just going to read the proposal for furnishing fire apparatus. It's a one Pierce commercial 1,500 gallon per minute pumper mounted on a Freightliner M2-106 cabin chassis, price of $380,872. Well, actually, Atlantic Energy Solutions. Pierce is the brand. I remember David telling me whatever. I'm gonna go through and catch that one, so. Kirsty, did you get that company name?
Yes, sir.
The Atlantic?
Atlantic.
Dealer is Vogelpole Fire Equipment in Earlinger, Kentucky. One E1 commercial pumper with a 1,500 gallon per minute Hail DSD pump, Hail 2.1 foam system, 10, 10 gallon water tank, 20 gallon foam tank, and heavy-duty extruded aluminum body mounted on a Freightliner M6102 four-door chassis. Price below includes all equipment in the base specifications. Tim Collenberg Apparatus Equipment Sales, Fleet Fire Equipment. Proposal for one HME commercial 1,500 gallon per minute pumper. Not sure what it's on. David, let me turn these over.
What are all the specifications on these things like? I mean, you know?
I don't know until I get a chance to look through.
Yeah, it's gonna take some time to go through all of them, just because there's so much to it. Are reps here? I know all three of you, okay. I assume that, but I don't want to make assumptions, so.
The HME is actually from 911 Fleet and Fire.
Okay. Well, I see that now, but I'm just... Okay. What's the vehicle?
To all respect, Freightliner.
Do you have any questions, David?
I have a question. The RTF staff was in the big packet, and they put it in there to show yes or no whether or not the equipment we requested's on there.
Should be yes or no.
That'd be the big thing. We kind of set out options, what we're looking for, and they can put yes or no whether or not they're bidding, that'd be a quick reference. We can kind of look through and then go through.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions for us?
You mentioned our name was Atlantic Energy Solutions. It's Atlantic Emergency Solutions. Or I may have misheard.
There's no telling what I said.
He did say energy.
You got it.
Yeah, Atlantic Emergency Solutions.
I guess my only question would be your timetable. I mean, you're gonna try to...
Pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would have to have a special call if we can.
Yeah, we'll have to have a special call meeting. We won't wait till the July meeting to do it. We'll have a special call meeting.
Let's meet June meeting.
It's just my...
I hope so.
I'm trying to get through. I got stuff to do.
He's gonna get to the end of fiscal year.
Places to go.
Will we be allowed to come to the special meeting to hear?
Oh, yeah.
It's open to the public.
Yeah. And like I say, if you have any questions, David, or if you all want to...
You need to sit down with David and I.
I think you'll have to go through those, and who have questions?
That's...
Yeah, my question's probably after we go through that. If y'all want to give us your calls.
They're up here.
Where anyone needs them, if they can.
Their cards are in the books, so.
Put them back in the box if you're for you. Just put them back in here for you.
If y'all have any questions for me, I would excuse you.
No problem. We appreciate y'all.
Those two back there will be the ones to ask.
Appreciate y'all's interest and...
All right, thank you all.
I wouldn't worry about the boxes.
Good.
What were they talking about? Did you write them?
Did you read my scribbles? Atlantic Emergency. Be careful there.
Way to go, David.
Call it, Dave. New Orleans still waiting.
Rub it in. Rub it in. Somebody's been to New Orleans this weekend without me.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Have too many beignets.
They're the second honeymoon.
All them beignets are in.
Joan, did you just go to Cafe Du Monde, or did you eat the other?
I was going when we ate beignets.
Yeah, the other one's better. Okay.
So we don't have to make a decision on this yet? We want to get a...
No, we'll have to turn them over, so these guys will have to go through it.
I think it is.
All bids were within $7,000 of each other on a $387,000 project's pretty good.
What was the low bid?
$387,200. High bid was $387,240. So, less than $7,000 between them.
Are you familiar with the company that's the low bidder?
Is there one?
Until I looked through the bid specs, I'd say that'd be my recommendation.
Well, I realize she would like to look at them. Sure, because anything can be inside there that needs to be looked into. All right. Next item, first reading of the 2122 budget.
We do it at the end of the meeting, please?
We can. Next item is the landlord responsibility on the... Did we do the first reading last?
I don't think so.
We didn't, did we? We were just gonna send it to AV. He's not here. So, we'll go on down to the next item, the land and water resolution. And this is for the grant we've already approved a client for. I just need your approval of the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the resolution for the land and water grant.
Second.
We have a motion second and further discussion. Those who favor synch path out. Post same. Motion passes. Mike, anything?
No.
David? Mark? Code or fire? Cindy?
I just wanted to ask, behind my house, the fence line on the open, all that trees, they grew up and now they're hanging. I can't like mow like four feet of my backyard. Is this for me to clean, or cut, or get someone to come in and cut it?
My...
Going from the backside.
Yeah, I know where she lives.
She lives real close to where you live.
Probably.
All right, you know how your...
Your first spot would be, we start with the state.
Goes down here and turns and comes over again.
House backs up against Goshen Road on... Is it Barnes?
Mrs. Goshen heard things all the way.
Barnes from the backside of the fence.
I'm sorry?
It's not in my yard.
It's on the other side.
It's on the other side of the fence.
Yeah. So that's State Highway and State Rightway.
Okay.
I'm not trying to pass the buck, but it's not... They'll have to be the ones to... Would you...
Laura? Let me stay down one day.
They threw you under the bus big time, didn't they?
He works for State Highway.
Yeah, I did work for them. I will pay for... Where we set this?
It's on Goshen Road right up here.
Soon as you turn down the option.
Tiffany Ann Schroders.
Do you know where the bad intersection is? Up to the stoplight. She lives in, on that stretch right, where, kind of where it floods down there.
Yeah.
On this side.
Yeah.
Okay, I won't be there tomorrow because I have an eye on it, but Wednesday morning, I will talk to my supervisor over there and tell him your situation.
Okay.
And he will come down and look at it, and if it's on our roadway, we'll probably do it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
James, you have anything?
No, said I can find them.
Sandy?
Larry, I apologize, should've asked you before, but where are we on cleaning out ditches? I know you're starting, stopping, starting, stopping.
We try to hit everything downtown. We're trying to hit it spring and fall. We have, we've done some on the north, but this time of year, the ditching is kind of on the back burner.
Yeah.
So, the last several big rains we've had, the flooding that we normally have had downtown is not here. I'm not saying what we done and fixed it, because the state has done a lot on Highway 62.
I think it was a combination of things.
Yeah.
The ditch that runs along Madison between third and fourth, have you looked at that? I wonder if it needs some cleaning out, because there's some Iowa's in it.
We just did that last fall, and what we have done, what we're going back and doing, we're actually making it a little bit wider.
Yeah.
At the bottoms. We did not do that this spring, but we did hit it last fall, but we didn't widen it. We can't.
Okay. All right. And then as far as debris and stuff that's in it, who is responsible for that? Because I noticed that one of them, where it goes under the, to the tile, is just full of tree limbs.
I like to think homeowners will take care of it, but of course, they don't.
Yeah. We try to on our ditch, but on some of the other ditches...
Normally, when you get a rain that fills them up, there's not enough time to get the debris out.
Yeah, yeah. All righty.
Charles?
No, I'm in good shape.
Kevin?
Okay. Pickleball. These people are driving me insane. I love them to death, but they're driving me insane. We did, we did go ahead and do the grant.
It's been applied for, and it should have...
And it's June 1st, or is it May?
It should have a response sometime in June.
Sometime in June, that's what I was saying. They're already wanting to know if they can put, and this is on them, I did not have anything to do with it. They want to purchase, their little club, I guess they call it, wants to purchase a box, and it's for blowers, nets, odd and in stuff that they need for the court, and they're gonna purchase it on their own. Now, we'd have to tell them where to put it, and I'm not really sure we know.
Storage box.
It's a storage box for equipment that they need, like they blow their... These people are fanatical. I mean, I love them, again, I love them to death, and I've been over, I've met with them in Owensboro, I've met with them here, I've met with them in Owensboro again, I've met with them here again. They're good people, but they are, they're ready for us to get something done. And I know we haven't really officially done anything yet. I hate for them to spend money on something that we can't follow through with. But this box that they're talking about would need to be bolted to the ground, so it couldn't be just picked up and taken off. And it also, if they're paying for it, we're not paying a dime for it. And I mean, we could...
If they buy it and bolt it to the ground, then we get the grant, then we gotta take it back up.
See, that's what I'm thinking, and I don't want to do that, so. I would, I told them, wait to see what happens, because who knows? We may have money left over, we can buy the box as well, and then they wouldn't even be out of your money. But they're, they're really pushing to get this through, and I, if you get approached by the pickleball people, run.
Yeah.
They're, they are, they are so many of them getting bored and bored and bored.
Hey, we senior citizens can get aggressive.
I tell you, the bad thing is, these senior citizens are aggressive anyway, and they've really... I told somebody, I said, it's watching somebody that's never golfed in their entire life, and all of a sudden, they start golfing, and you know how their eyes get kind of crazy, and they get, they gotta golf all the time?
Yeah.
These people play pickleball every day. I mean, it's not like a once a week, or once every other week. They play every day somewhere. They're playing in Owensboro. They play, they'll play at, oh, I can't think of the little park out there on the east end, west end of town, and then they'll play at the Owensboro Christian Church, and then they'll play, they just travel and play everywhere. It's a group of them, there's like 50, and they, they're very fanatical. But I will say this, and I will say this very honestly. When I went to Owensboro, I met the two people that are running their pickleball thing over there, the group that they have. They could not believe that Beaverdam wasn't having any more trouble than we were trying to get this done. They, they just jumped through hoops over in Owensboro to get anything done. And you know, we've been very, Larry's met with them, I've met with them, Paul's met with them, we've all, they come down here and met with us down here at the meeting, and they, they have applauded us, because we're not, we're very easy to get along with, the Owensboro people are. And the Owensboro people want to come here and play. They're dying to come here and play. So I think it's something we need to get through if we can. I know we gotta wait on the thing, I told them that. And I told them it had been pushed back, but it's interesting. They're going on the radio show, Jerry's Radio Show.
They're aggressive. I've had it at church about three, four times.
I'm telling you.
Never be able to church.
They're nicest people in the world, but boy, they're, they're very aggressive when it comes to this. They want it bad.
Well, I can understand.
I can too, and I can tell you.
Like a kid with a lawn mower.
But...
But if we can get somebody to pay for half of it, I'd wait a month.
No, I told them, I said, anytime we get money, free money, I don't care how long it takes, we get free money.
I mean, and it's not like, and it's like I told, I think Charlotte was talking to, it's not like some of these grants where you apply now, and in December, January, you find out you've been awarded, and you're gonna get it in the next September.
Eight months later, yeah.
You know, this is one, because not only are they supposed to make the announcement in June, they want the project signed, sealed, and delivered and finished by August 31st.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those quick turnarounds.
ARD, and I like...
When I explained to them how we were doing it, because we sat, we sat down with several people and broke it down and built it, they were amazed that we could do what we could do, because our, for some reason, our tennis courts up there are made different than most tennis courts. Ours are 30 feet wider. So instead of getting three courts on one side, we can get four. And they were amazed about that.
They will be used, too.
And they're gonna, I think they're gonna be used.
So there'll be a total of eight courts if we use the whole thing?
Well, I'm only, I told Larry, I would just like to get the four done to see how...
No, I know, but there's enough space up there to do a total of eight courts.
And they could not believe that. They, they were shocked.
They're planning a big old tournament in Owensboro, I saw it in papers.
They actually asked us if we did it, would, would we want to get a tournament here?
Of course.
Statewide tournament. And I said, sure, we go for stuff like that all the time.
That comes...
But very good. And Cindy, they're actually wanting to do some improvements to the, you know where the gazebo, or whatever that thing is up there?
Right.
They're wanting to do some improvements there, and they, they don't care if they have porta-potties. I was shocked, they said, well, can we get a couple of porta-potties? I said, porta-potties are fine with us, we, you know, we don't have to rug sewer lines and all that. They're very, very easy to get along with, and they're, but they are the most fanatical people I've had to deal with.
They're like gum, oh, is not the word for them.
Yeah, they're beyond that. They're, and they're nice as can be, but they are, I mean, they call me three and four times a week.
But they play in the winter.
I thought you were bad, and you're not even close.
Oh, wow.
You need to step up your game, you're just getting blown away.
Cindy, that was a compliment.
That is a wonderful compliment. But yeah, I do hope, and I want you all to be aware of it, because you need to, if you meet these people, tell them who you are, because they're gonna pat you on the back and tell you what a great job you're doing. It's the most amazing thing. They are probably the most polite and receptive people I've had to deal with.
I got some people they need to talk to then, get some lessons too.
Yeah.
Oh, I did have a question, too. Where are we at on the well?
Still leaving state approval.
What's their problem?
Well, you're talking about state.
Well, let me tell you, they're probably not even in the office, are they?
Everybody's working from home.
Yeah. So by the time it gets to whoever is at home, it's gonna be probably another month or two.
Well, we'll be in a drought situation by then.
Not with the rain we can have.
That's true.
Hey, we go from one extreme to the other.
I know, I was talking with friends, you, you don't have this problem in Indiana, and Tennessee, and Georgia, and Ohio, but in Kentucky, our governor still wants everything shut down, as far as the office has gone.
I don't have anything to say about that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say much either.
Driver's license.
Hmm?
Deflected driver's license.
Yeah, you can't even get a driver's license anymore.
But that's all I had, was about the pickleball.
Did you go get it?
I just wanted to make sure we got that.
They wouldn't charge you.
Which is what I'd rather do.
You have mail order, you can't go over and get one.
That's what I did, yeah.
I got mail, started one over today, I didn't know it.
I'd rather do that.
That's, that's sad, though, when we won't take care of our people.
Only if you wanna make a change on your license.
And I'm not, I want to clarify, I'm not blaming Shannon or the local office, it has nothing to do with them, they have no say in it.
So you gotta go online to get a license?
No, you go over there and pick up an application, fill it out, and leave it in a drop box, and they'll mail it back to you.
I printed mine from the internet, and then mailed it over, and then they mailed my license to me.
Gosh, I hope I'm not due for a couple more years.
I liked it.
But I'm afraid they're gonna leave it like that. I don't like it. I hope they don't leave it like that.
I can't imagine they would leave it like that. It would be nice if you had that...
Option.
Option, because I like...
You just want that perpetual picture from 20 years ago on your driver's license.
Yeah, I got dark hair. People look at it, look, and I'm like, I used to not color my hair.
Oh, you do?
I mean, I used to color my hair.
I was coming through an airport, it was either October or December, airport in New Orleans, and the young lady said, sir, your license expired last February. I'm like, oh, okay. So I got mine taken care of, but, so you can still do anything with an expired license, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You done?
I was done, yes.
Okay, I've got one thing to bring up, and Larry, my bitch, were you gonna talk about junk days?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, I've been called everything but a white man over this, but I don't care. These deadbeats is exactly what they are, when they go to bring this stuff in, and from all over town.
Our last two junk days that we had, spring to fall of 2020, spring pickup was 65 ton, the fall trash pickup was 56 ton. Our normal weekly pickup is about 25 ton. The spring 2021, we picked up 72.94 ton.
One day.
In one, in a...
Well, one week.
They could, they were running two trucks.
Four days, 117 man-hours, where normally, on a regular day, we run four hours, four hours on Tuesday, four hours on Wednesday, seven hours on Thursday.
Well, what I saw setting out this spring, looked like they had a moving sale from two or three families.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I, I called Paul Sunday afternoon, and I saw two people from North, no, not knocking North Branch, or anybody's man. I saw two people, I personally know, bringing, bringing stuff in and putting in trash.
And we're the bad guys for calling them out on it. I found that out, too, but I don't care. My suggestion, B, if we're gonna continue to do it, is there will be no more furniture, no furniture or appliances involved on it. That seemed to be, and mattresses. Lord, I didn't know how many mattresses you could throw at any one time.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, there was stuff I saw put out that...
I didn't know that we accepted...
It was like people cleaned out people's garages from 50 years ago.
And that's, that's putting a lot on the...
Refrigerators, like microwaves.
Luckily, we had no one get hurt.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot, 72 ton.
Well, and you, but in the past, we've never had anybody go overboard.
I mean, we, we had basically shut, shut down the whole city function, run two trucks, so we had six people, six of our nine guys, picking up trash.
And I had one person saying, well, you know, it's not coming out of your pocket, it's the city. I'm like, it's coming out of your pocket? No, it's the city paying for it. I'm like, where do you think it comes from?
People don't understand, do you do this job, you don't understand?
They don't understand, they think, well, the city's paying for it, I'm not. Well, yeah, you are. But that would be my suggestion.
We use it twice a year.
We got a little time to think about it.
We just do it once a year for right now. I think cancel the fall, fall pick cleanup days right now, that's what they did in spring. They've abused the pilgrimage.
I think we should still have the fall junk days.
Well, it's, it's just like I said about...
But I don't really, I don't feel like we should pick up appliances, because those are just too heavy, and I'm, that's, to me, that's asking too much out of the guys that are hard to, hard to be garbage pickup.
What, right now, do we refuse to pick up, anything on the list we don't pick up?
Paints.
And tires.
Tires.
Shingles.
Oil, shingles. We put on their construction material, you know, which would be tuba fours, or somebody's sheet rock, or whatever, but we did go ahead and pick it up this time.
Well, the other, they were leaving it on the street.
Yep.
Yep.
What was that first thing you mentioned, we don't pick up?
Tires, shingles, oils, paint.
Tires what?
Shingles.
Shingles, oils, paint.
I can't echo in here.
Well, we can always think about it a little bit and talk about it next month, we've got a little time for October, but I think if we, one thing we suggested was, I had, this came on social media, setting up a garbage truck out here and giving two days and letting the people come and bring the garbage here to put it in there, and you have to have a Beaverdam, you have to have a driver's license with a Beaverdam address in order to dump it.
In Butler County, I think that's what they do, they set up dumpsters.
That's probably not a bad thought.
But, but then I hear from people, well, I don't have a truck to haul it down to City Hall.
Well, the real funny is, you pull up a house, and their truck will be hooked to their trailer with all this stuff sitting on it, and expect us to...
Transfer.
Throw away, you know, they have, they have means of doing it, but anyway.
In Wednesday, it's free anyway.
But I've had a number of people talking about, I said, we would have to, one location in particular, they got stuck behind traffic, they'd have to stop and wait while somebody in a truck stopped to unload their truck on the side of the road on Main Street. And he said, these people weren't from town.
We, we did have several calls, people calling and thanking us. Uh, Subway actually called and offered us a, a food tray for the employees, we didn't, we didn't take them up on it, but people are appreciative of it.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I hate to do it with it all together.
It's a big help, I know it's a big help for us, and a lot of times, we don't have it much by the time the scavengers have hit it. I mean...
Mine was cleared out.
He's putting it out worth while, I'll tell you.
I could burn out grill, it'd burn out.
But I just feel like that something to think about is, when I say no appliances, no furniture, no mattresses.
Yeah. Well, mattresses were kind of skeptical, skeptical.
Well...
Or, you know, you got bed bugs, and they would carry stuff onto their own house, and...
There's all kinds of things that a mattress can hold.
And I don't think, when that was set up, I don't think that was the intent, was to haul everybody's furniture off. I think, you know, the stuff you collect that can't go in a bag and go in a garbage can throughout the year and...
And then there are certain stuff you're gonna accumulate over the year that you would throw away, but some of the stuff, like I said, it was just beyond belief what were people were putting out there.
Can we find out maybe what similar cities do?
Now, Hartford, didn't they do away with their junk day?
No, I think they still had it. I, I know this year here, they did not take TVs and computers. I, I'm pretty sure certain on that, and I'm not sure about appliances.
Well, I saw enough TV said that started on store.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
But I do, I feel like appliances, that, I just feel like that's asking too much of the guys.
Well, if you stop to think about it, a sectional couch with a recliner in one end of it's about as bad as appliances.
Yeah. It actually could be probably worse.
Yeah, because it's so awkward sized, you can't... Okay. You have anything else?
Uh, I've got a couple things, I can wait until close session, just a couple little things. Uh, well, one, let's go ahead and talk about it. The dough, donut guy, what's his name?
I don't know.
He's gonna build...
Timmy?
He's gonna build a new store.
He's a friend of yours, Laura.
On Main Street, and he had his plans drawn up, and they put in there one entrance and one exit. He's asked if he can have two, and he has done a sketch here. He went to Nancy, Nancy's, Nancy taught him planning's on it, he had to have 100 foot whatever, but she would approve it if the city was okay with it as well.
Oh.
How many feet does he have?
Like 94-ish?
He's not that close to any of the street intersections, that would be too bad.
Correct.
If it's right next to a street intersection, that's bad.
Yes, it's, yeah. Between the tent and the, uh...
So...
Oh, okay.
Up by the medical building.
Oh, okay.
So what, the plan right now is just the one driveway? Dude, I know, this is different.
It's a regular plan that he had, it's just having a driveway. And the first thing, Jared, what Nancy had drunk, had drawn out for him, was she would approve and the city was okay with it.
You gonna put a drive-thru?
That's better than that.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, put a drive-thru.
He is gonna have some seating in there?
Mm-hmm.
Not as much as I thought, though. I was hoping he'd have quite a bit, because I think he'd stay busy.
Yeah.
He stays busy, doesn't he?
I know, but I think if he had people going in, uh, I think he'd see.
I like the drive-thru for people like me, like going to pajamas.
What if you have a flat tire, and then you have to get out of your car?
Call Mike Allen.
Don't get me down with it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's it?
No. I have no idea what it is.
Just have to, I have a problem with it.
I like it, I think that's a better...
Well, I don't think it'd be so cramped trying to get in and out of there.
Do we need to approve that, then?
Nancy said that she was okay with it if the city was, so I don't know if it needs approval.
I would just see if she needs it, we can always do it again.
The other thing, I have to wait until after close session.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion for close session.
Let's go close session.
Second.
I can be there. I'm good now.
We've already made the motion, we've got to vote.
Which one?
Don't go back to the session.
Open session, sorry.
Querrie, motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes.
And I make a motion that we let, we hired David Hayes as a full-time employee, and you've got the rates, or you do, does she know the rates? It's on the list.
We can start it out at 10:50, going to $11 an hour after 90 days.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. We need to...
We have a 25-foot goose neck trailer that the city purchased two years ago for 6,500. Uh, got a, a guy that wanted to buy for the same amount for 6,500 dollars. I just need the city approval to sell it.
Salute.
I'll second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same.
Letting you get in there.
Well, I, I didn't know how many I got in on.
I was sending a message to my mom and dad, so I didn't forget.
Okay.
You were talking about, first, uh, yeah, the other item is the first reading of the budget for 21-22.
I make a motion, we accept the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. That motion passes. Do you may have anything else to bring up?
Make a motion with you, Jared?
So good.
We have a second, so, thank you all.
Landlord stuff.
Well, I was gonna get stuff for AV to write up, so we have, a lot of times on the first reading, we don't have to, but we have this.